Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of October 4th. We will be led this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance by Troop Six, Bristol Troop Six, if you gentlemen could come up, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, if you could remain standing. Thank you. We'll follow their lead. Whenever you're ready, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everyone to remain standing. If we could have a moment of silence for the horrible tragedy that happened in Nevada. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Troop Six. Excellent job. So before we start our regular meeting, we have a couple of things that we're going to do, and we're going to start off by recognizing a gentleman and then a few gentlemen. His name is John Cabral. He's from our sister city in Portugal, which is La Guia, if I'm saying that correct, and I hope I am. And if you look to your right is the flag, right there. John was here about 20 years ago, if my information is correct, and did that wonderful work at Mosaiaco Park on the corner of Franklin and Wood Street, and he's back again to do some needed repairs. Our winters are pretty tough around here, as everybody knows. The Administrator brought this to the council's attention, and I'd like to have the Administrator just add a little bit more to it.
Sure, I'd be proud to. I just want to thank Mr. Cabral for his work and his dedication in keeping our relationship strong, and also thank you to Joe DePont from town for hosting him, and Tony Villa for putting it together. What Mr. Cabral is doing is repairing his mosaic work that he did 20 years ago at the corner of Wood and Franklin. So surely you're going to see a revival of that area, and thank you to those three gentlemen, and also Tony Vieira from the Sewer Department, who's also assisting him there. We had three barrels, 55-gallon drum barrels at DPW for the last 20 years, waiting for this opportunity to repair what we had there, and I think it's going to be fabulous. And again, it's thank you to the mayor of La Guia, Christina Demarc, I believe her last name is, Demarc. Thank you for her commitment. She did send her mason here to make that repair at the cost of the city of La Guia. So I think it's pretty special, and I can't wait till the end of the week when the project's finished. Thanks again.
Gentlemen, John, the town of Bristol thanks you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the first reading, rather, the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2017-13, and the council will recall, this is to remove the imprisonment penalty throughout the town code.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. This council's had a recent commitment to be a little bit clearer on what we're passing on this, so this imprisonment clause seemed a bit over the top on a lot of the things that were out there, so that was the purpose behind removing the imprisonment clause. So there's still fines for things that you're not supposed to do, but we felt imprisonment was a little bit too much for littering and things like that. So we have a mo— I'm kidding. So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item C2, this is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2017-14. This is to define, or rather redefine, the residential parking zone to include those streets amended in the recent residential parking district per ordinance 2017-7.
Motion to approve and adopt, second reading.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions for the chief. Chief, I have a few questions on this. I was just wondering how are we notifying the residents on this, and that they're— are they going to be aware of there's a process in notifying all the residents that this change is going into place?
Yes, I believe we had spoken early with regards to how that would take place. We're having flyers delivered to each resident in that area. That'll be done through the police department. Sergeant Moss, who spearheaded this, has been in contact with Clerk Lucirillo on an ongoing basis to make notification through the media. It'll be on our webpage, and I think as you and I spoke offline, we're going to cover all bases. This isn't something we're going to go out there and start enforcing and handing out tickets like there's no tomorrow. We're going to educate everyone to the best of our ability, and what I mean by that is if we see someone that doesn't have one, a sticker, we're going to give them a friendly reminder. The way of identifying that is obviously when we pull up to the back of this vehicle or in front of the vehicle, there'll be a plate. We'll run the registration. If it says 122 Church Street, we'll leave them a little note that they need to get a sticker from the town clerk's office. So before we get out there and really enforce this, we're going to do everything we can to make sure everyone knows exactly what we expect of them.
Great. Just wanted to make sure our communication plan was in force, and it seems to be.
And to the vice chair's point, Mr. Administrator, is, you know, like any ordinance, parking is an issue here in the town, and we explain to the community along with parking, you know, we have a lot of visitors, tourism. So we're trying to address it along with our departments, our police department and this council, but, you know, certainly we will be monitoring this, and certainly going forward, any feedback from the police chief or our residents to see how it goes. Certainly, we can always revisit things, so I just wanted to just make some clarity to that.
I just want to comment, there was some notice that not all the streets are done. What we had to do is, we're looking to reorder some signs to consolidate. What we learned was that there were some existing signs, so we're duplicating that effort with some of the signs that we added. So we're working on getting a consolidated sign out there, and the rest of the streets will be completed.
Okay.
If any of your residents are inquiring, how come the signs haven't been posted in particular areas, we're ordering a consolidated sign with a consolidated message.
Thank you. Thank you.
You got it. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the first reading of ordinance 2017-15. This is to consider several items that were discussed at earlier meetings for no parking, small no parking areas on Congregational Street, Goulart Avenue, and Siegel Street. This is the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, this is an ordinance that I believe was recommended by the zoning board, planning board, I'm sorry, 2017-16. This is to amend the requirement for public water and sewer on certain lots. This is the first reading and call for a public hearing to be held on November 8th.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading for a call for a public hearing on November 8th.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the petition of Michelle Cavallo, doing business as Wicked Local Nutrition, 705 Metacom Avenue, requests council consideration for a vidling license. You have recommendations from the Department of Water Pollution Control, the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police, all to approve.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion to approve the request for a vidling license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And you have a request from Jerry Johnson of 628 Wood Street that a no longer needed accessible parking space should be removed. This is the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And also from my office, we received notice that there are currently accessible parking spaces on Siegel Street that are no longer needed. This would be the first reading of those also.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it doesn't normally go this fast. Isn't this wonderful?
The next item is—
Don't jinx it, don't jinx it.
—is the petition of Steve Scuba, 32 Ridge Road. Mr. Scuba recommends a new disabled veterans tax structure.
So Mr. Scuba reached out to me and subsequently Councilman Stewart a little bit earlier and said that he could not be here tonight, and he asked if we would continue this agenda item. I know for myself, I had some additional questions on it, and I believe we probably all do. When I shared with the Administrator that we were asked to extend this out to our next meeting, there actually may be some appropriateness for this council to take an action, which what I mean by that is maybe we can do some research prior to the next meeting to make that more fruitful. So I understand that the— she is here. Chris Belair is our tax assessor, and I don't know if there were questions that we had for Chris, but I don't think we need to get in any questions right now. I know that we all wanted a little bit more information and some background, and my suggestion is that maybe there's a motion that we refer this to the Administrator prior to our next meeting, and the tax assessor to give us that information, including how it affects us, what does it actually represent, how does that go out, future out over five years, such and so forth. So what do my colleagues think?
For me, I just want to verify that these numbers are correct, and to what is the impact to the town, and just where did the info come from, information come from on this. I just want to make sure we dotted our i's, crossed our t's.
I certainly do agree with the Chair and Vice Chair. I think it gives us more time instead of tonight with the recommendations, but to do a little more homework on what is proposed, not only for the numbers and is it feasible, but this is a model that is in other states or the communities, so I think other than the numbers, we have to form something that will fit a model for Bristol when we present this as a package, and have everybody's input that way also, so we could do it the right way.
Okay.
Chris Belair, tax assessor and collector for the town of Bristol.
Yes, I totally recommend. I was going to ask for a continuation because we get this report from the state that says these are the exemptions throughout the state, but that report actually—
Can you move that microphone closer to you, Chris?
That report actually says that it's taxes and some of it is assessments, so I need to get the tax rates from other towns and make it all the same, so I can see where we line up. Okay? Where he got the numbers is, I gave him all of the veterans at the time that we went over the report when this had been requested in the past. He plugged in the changes that he wanted, but that's a conflict of one of the ordinances that we have, so I need to talk with the town solicitor over that as well.
Okay.
Could I just ask you a question to clarify this? Excuse me, I agree that it should probably be increased, but on the second page, it says all calculations are based on a flat rate of 250 for veterans and $100 per 10% disability. So that mean for every percent you're disabled, it would be another $100? In other words, if you had 30% disabled, it would be 300?
Right. That's what he's proposing.
That's what he's proposing, yeah. I just wanted to be clear about that. Okay.
I'm hoping that before the next meeting, we could meet with Steve Scuba, I apologize, and maybe get clarity from him on more of what he was looking for, so at our next meeting we have clearer information that we can take the next step on.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue this item to the October 25th meeting?
Is it the 25th or 24th?
Yes, the 25th, and I second that.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And that also includes the referral to the Administrator and the assessor?
It does.
It does. Sorry.
That's okay.
Everybody. Is that a blanket?
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, is an amended Fourth of July Committee list as provided by Donna Falcoa.
Motion to accept the 2017, 2018 membership list as amended from the Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is Economic Development Commission. You have the resignation of Jerry Daughtry.
Motion to accept Jerry's resignation with a letter of thanks. I just want to say that I really enjoyed working with Jerry. He's done a lot of great work for the town, and I'm sure he will stay active and work in many other different ways, I'm sure. I hope.
And I second that and echo the comments from the Vice Chair that he was instrumental in his position as Chair, and I don't see him going away in the community. He's very active, so we thank him for his involvement, so.
Agreed. I did speak with Jerry, and he does want to stay involved, but peripherally. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is G1C. This is the Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau, local representative with term to expire in September of 2020. You have an application of Karen Binder of 11 Poli Street.
Mr. Chairman, I know we have, and Mr. Clerk, I don't know if it's too late because it's been advertised, we do have a meeting next week, and I'm just wondering if this would be a good time for this interview of Ms. Binder, and thank her for applying for this position. It was a position held by Stephen Bridgety, which his terms have expired, so with that, I'm just curious what my colleagues and—
No problem adding it.
You think it would be good?
I don't have a problem adding it. Perfect.
I hear a motion.
And that was in a form of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Board of Tax Assessment Review. This is with term to expire in December of 2017, and an alternate to with term to expire in December of 2019. You have the nomination by Anthony Raygo, the Chairman of the Democrat Town Committee, of Carolyn Medina and Tracy Ramos.
Motion to accept the names as submitted by the Chairman of the Democratic Town Committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I just, clarity point, do we typically interview this?
You certainly may.
Have we in the past, or has that been the practice in the past?
I think so.
I can't, to tell you the truth, I can't remember exactly. I don't think so. I don't remember you interviewing the most recent appointees, which was Diane Medias was one of them. I don't remember there being an interview for that.
Okay, so the motion was to accept, and it was seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the Historic District Commission, the resignation of Jessica Doyle.
Motion to accept the resignation and thank Ms. Doyle for her time on Historic District Commission and advertised us, as we do. So there are positions open, and as the Chairman says, we thank everybody who serves on our boards and all those seeking interest to get involved with the community. We thank you very much.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As Councilman Stewart already said, I always say it every time, but I would say that if you're interested, reach out to any or all of us, and we'd be happy to give you some rundown of what kind of time commitment is there, what kind of level of expertise that you need, or lack thereof. But if you're interested, or you think you might be interested, reach out to one of us, and we'd be happy, and I mean any one of us that are sitting here. We'd be happy to give you a rundown of what's there, what's available, and what might fit your needs. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, this is continued from your September 13th meeting. This is an item placed on the previous agenda by Councilman Tiscia regarding the dedication of Wally Park in honor of former Councilman Halsey Harrisov.
Counselor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So tonight, I'm hoping to continue discussions which we started last week, working towards coming up with a way we can honor and recognize former Councilman Halsey Harrisov. And at the last meeting, we talked about deferring to the Administrator to get some more thoughts on taking steps ahead in this manner. So, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you. Our Parks Director, Walter Burke, did some research on the history of naming parks, also suitable locations for the dedication sign, some conceptual designs of what the sign would like, and also costs of the sign. Walter, could you please report to us on what you have?
My understanding is that there is, it's Halsey, I mean, Wally Beach is the section of the waterfront that has been renovated actually recently, and it extends from the beach up to the parking lot and then continues to Wally Street. Whether it was actually formally named Wally Beach or not, is—I wasn't able to find out that there was any ceremony or designation of that beach to be Wally Beach. I think it just came from Wally Street and then Wally Beach, because it's right at the end of the street. However, my personal feeling is that the Wally family, and as one of the four founding fathers of Bristol, should certainly remain Wally Beach. And I don't, I haven't heard any question that that should change. On the contrary, most of the people that I've spoken to, and I've gone down to Wally Beach and met with the people that hang out there, and they do it pretty religiously, and they all felt the same way. The park, which was purchased, I believe in two different sections, now really extends to be a feely big park. It was never named, and it was never named, and actually, the first time I heard the word Wally Park was at the last Town Council meeting. I've never heard it described as Wally Park. It's always been Wally Beach. So that, the park has never been named. So if the council decides that they want to name Wally Park after Halsey Harrisov, then it's not changing a name from something else to a new name. It is, on the rendering, I put, we had, I spoke to Diane and some other folks about where the most appropriate place to put a sign in, and it would be right in the park, right on the park, right next to the parking lot, facing the expanse of the park. I also propose that on the wall, the retaining wall, right next to Wally Beach, that we put a brass insert into the wall that says Wally Beach. So there's a full distinction that this is Wally Beach at Halsey Harrisov Park, if that's the decision. That would come in line with what we've done in several other parks. We have Mrs. Perry's Garden at Thomas Park. We have Ramus Field at Paul Park. We have Manny, well, not Manny, Suzo Park, but we have the baseball fields at Vets Park are named after somebody. So it's a continual type of trend that the town has done. Now, on a personal note, and I don't think there's any question of the, what Halsey Harrisov has done for this community and for this town, beyond the family recognition and the Americas Cup, and just the whole huge tradition of what they've done in the town. Halsey himself has been responsible for probably 50% of the parks that are in town, either being able to get them, design them, fund them through different grants and ways in getting state money to build, and I really don't see that there's anybody more deserving to name a park after him than Halsey. His contribution goes without saying, and that's my personal feeling, but either way, I just wanted to, from my perspective of 23 years, I've never heard that area called Wally Park, just for your own understanding. So that's—
Thank you.
Okay.
So what are my colleagues' thoughts?
My thoughts are, definitely, I mean, Halsey has contributed quite a bit to the town, and that goes unsaid. My only hesitation is in regards to the parameters that us as a council want to set for future dedications, because, not that Halsey hasn't done a lot, he has, so putting that aside, also, a lot of men and women around town, whether in different boards and commissions, have also given a lot of their time as well. A lot of councilwomen, councilmen have also given their time, and I'm just wondering if we set a precedence of dedicating one park, aren't these other people deserving of those as well? So I think we just need to talk about what are those parameters in regards to, you know, how we're going to dedicate from here on to the future. So those are my thoughts. I'm all for doing something for Halsey, but not necessarily maybe a park, but maybe a park bench, or, I mean, I know I talked to the town administrator, there could be possible other options. So that's where I'm at right now.
So I, I agree with Vice Chairman Sweeney, and that's why I looked into, going forward, a lot of towns have a municipal naming policy, and I think we all agree, you know, Councilman Harrisov is well-deserving, but as the Vice Chair said, you know, they're going to be more well-deserving people with many years of stature that are amongst us or in the community, and we don't have anything in place. We don't have a policy. And I think you need a clear policy for naming any municipal property building and parks to provide a direction and criteria, a process involving all persons on behalf of the town and any working groups associated with the application, such as should have been involved here, giving the magnitude of naming something on behalf of somebody, you know, getting all the homework that is needed, other views, so, you know, it's solidified at the end of the day as a community, a policy that doesn't take away memorial or commemorative dedications or sponsorships, but only defines the proper recognition in a clear and timely manner for those who apply for such recognition, and to put forth to its residents and the well-being of the town and our assets. That's the type of policy I would like to see worked on with all the departments in our administration and this council for any future proposal. There are many throughout the state, and I know last Thursday, Mr. Administrator, the Chief, and the Treasurer, sitting at the Rhode Island Leagues of Cities and Towns honoring a man that's a Warren native, you know, I think our Solicitor knows him well, you know, 40 years serving as Town Manager in South Kingston, and these are the type of people with many years of service that are amongst us and in other communities. So how do you pay that recognition, and what is everyone's thoughts on that? I think we're all on the record to say that Halsey is well-deserving to be recognized. I think we should just take the steps, so when we go forward, you know, there's no questions of what this council decides. Personally, I like the comments from our Director of Parks and Recreation, because we all looked into it, and I don't think Wally Park was mentioned, Wally Park, until this topic came up. Everybody and my colleagues' concerns, even as I stated last meeting, is the generations of residents go— last meeting, is the generations of residents go there and know it as Wally Beach. And we want to take that, you know, consideration to those residents, because that's what they know that parcel as. I think it's a compromise to dedicate the signage for Wally Beach. I hope it's not just a little stamp that you see on the sidewalk. I think it has to be defined if, at the end of the day, this would be a shared outlet separated by the wall. Also, my concerns on the working groups looking at this is, it was mentioned that the money wouldn't cost the residents anything. As a council, I want to know where the money's coming from. I want to know who's involved. There was going to be a dedication ceremony. Is there going to be alcohol and food? As a council, we're not above the law. We need procedure and process. And that's what we have to discuss here tonight about this issue and going forward, so it's done right, and we all could be on board for this.
I have a slightly different view, and I think that, not even the years of service at Halsey, but what he did. Like, if you think of Bristol, what people think of is the parks. And it is the ambiance of the waterfront, the fact that we've had, you know, we maintain a working part of the waterfront. We have the parks along there that the town has deliberately gone out and purchased and upgraded the land, so that we have this beautiful aesthetics. And that piece is, is Halsey. I think that that is, was his vision as Administrator. Fortunately for him, he had a council that agreed with it. And also, open space money started to come out around that time, if I recall correctly. And so, we were able to take on properties over the years, such as Independence Park, and, I mean, even if we owned them, I mean, to beautify them, to make them a showcase and a centerpiece. And Wally Beach, I've always called Wally Beach Union, it's always been Wally Street Beach to me. It's always been Union Street Beach to me, you know? So, I don't, I think that this issue is, it's not so much that, there might be other people, you know, yeah, there's always other people, but this is like a significant contribution that no one else has made. You know, I mean, I would like to say as a councilperson, and those of us sitting on the council at that time, and agreed with the spending of the funds, that we all have a part of it, because it was a team effort. But Halsey's vision, his design, other things, is really what makes the town so special. And I also think this particular, as I said at the last meeting, this particular parcel of land, probably more appropriate and fitting than any other, because of the historic nature to his, to his family, and to the Harasoff, Harasoff, you know, boats being right adjacent to this. And I think that's also something that brings pride and distinction to Bristol in terms of tourism and everything now. So, I just think that this is sort of like the ideal location for those reasons. And so, I don't, I'm not bothered by, you know, we can put a policy in place for the future naming of whatever, but I just see this as different than, we want to recognize someone who's been doing, you know, government involvement for a long time. This is like a very specific idea, design, implementation, that I think really changed the focus of Bristol, the nature of Bristol, and enhanced us as a community going forward into what we are today, tourism, historic community that people want to come to and want to visit. And the pride in the community has a lot to do with the park system that we have, and with the, the vision of, of our Administrator at that time. So, I think it's appropriate, myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, first of all, I'd like to echo what Councilman Pirella says, relating to her support for this initiative. Regarding money for a sign, private dollars versus public dollars, regarding a dedication, a party, whether it's burgers, or hot dogs, or beer, or wine, nothing, none of those details can be worked out until we have a park to dedicate, a park to put a sign at. So, it's my hope that we can not burden the taxpayers any more than we need to, to put up a sign. I think there's many people out there that, it's my suspicion that there's many people out there who would like to contribute in this recognition by donating funds to the town to build a sign. No funds have been raised, there's no commitments, but it's my hope that the private citizens can come forward to help fund signage for this site. Regarding a dedication, maybe this is going to happen in the wintertime, and it has to be somewhere else. Maybe it happens in the spring. Maybe it happens on-site. I don't know. But the first thing is, we need a park. And so, I don't think that it's reasonable or feasible to have all of those things mapped out together to seek approval all at once for all of them. I think we need to take a step. Let's recognize the work of Councilman Harasoff, dedicate this park to him, and then look at what else we can do to tie this up in a bow. There's no doubt that Halsey stands apart. This is in recognition of significant contribution that he's made to this community. You know, I think it's one of our duties as leaders in this town to, to recognize others that have been responsible for shaping our community. What we have is a vacant piece of land with no name. It sits there with an old foundation for a gazebo, which hopefully someday one could be built, and maybe that's dedicated to one of you. This vacant piece of property is to the north of Wally Beach. I think it's fantastic that we do take steps to formally recognize Wally Beach. I think Walter's suggestion is fantastic. And I think that without the efforts of Councilman Harasoff, this vacant piece of land may have a waterfront home built on stilts to satisfy current FEMA flood regulations that obstruct the beautiful views to Hog Island and Papa Squash Point. That's what has been protected by the actions of Councilman Harasoff. And I think that it's important that we recognize that, to show that we see value that people bring to this community that changes lives. Maybe that park will be enjoyed by one of our kids, one of our community members' kids, that will inspire them to take a leadership role to make Bristol's quality of life better. So, I'd like to make a motion that we name this vacant piece of land, not Wally Park, this vacant piece of land, which is to the north of Wally Beach, in recognition of Halsey C. Harasoff, as detailed by our Department Head, Walter Burke. And then subsequently, we work out the details of the sign, the funding of the sign, maybe additional recognition, an unveiling of the sign. But right now, we have nothing to unveil. So, I'd like to take the first step tonight towards moving in that direction. So, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to make that motion.
Second?
There's a motion in a sec. One moment, please. Discussion from the council first?
On the second?
Well, there's, yeah, there's a motion in a second. Yep?
No, I just want to say, I asked a lot of residents around town about this when I was at Angelina's, and when I was at the farmer's market, and I was down in the neighborhoods, and I was asking residents about this and how they felt about, you know, the name change. And honestly, they, they all felt Halsey had done a lot of great work for the town, but they did not want Wally Beach name changed. So, for that, I was elected by the people, and I want to represent them. I honestly, at this time, until we have a set policy put in place, and, and we, and we know exactly what we want to do for him, I can't vote on this particular plan in this forum right now.
Well, we're not, we're not renaming Wally Beach. So, if that's what you mentioned to the residents, then of course they're going to say, no, let's not rename Wally Beach. So, and I'm not quite sure that, you know, if we're representing the residents, if a poll like that is really the best way to, to act, you know, I think, I've talked to many residents too, and I think.
Their town.
There's many, many people that I spoke with that think this is absolutely fantastic. And so, you know, I'm not quite sure that a poll for residents in this case is, is a way to really determine whether this is appropriate or not. I think we've heard some things at last meeting relating from other members of the community that thinks this is fantastic, people that took their time out of their schedule to come here to Town Hall to speak in favor of this. So, you know, I think in recognition of those residents, that's perfectly the reason to, to continue forward.
Well, I think that, I think the thing is, you know, Bristol's changed a great deal over the years. And I mean, a lot of, my point of this is, certainly Halsey has contributed a great deal over like 30 years, or whatever the number of years is. And some of that time has been as Administrator, and some of it has been as council time. I think, I think the vision is really the administrative time, and that would go back to the late, mid to late 80s. And so, you know, there may be many people who don't know that, that Halsey, from that perspective, and don't know that the sort of parks that we have today are direct reflection of his vision for them. And so, I think it's hard when you just talk to people and, you know, unless you give them like the whole facts of what's going on, and like, you know, what we're trying to do. I think that, you know, this could be a house. And there were lots of other things that these things could be. And town never looked better, and I think that's why he was one of the first administrators to be elected multiple years, because the town looked great, and all these projects were underway. And it really propelled us into a future that we, that we're realizing today. So, I think that we have to keep in mind more the perspective from the Administrator, from his administrative time than even his council time.
Well, hearing from my colleagues, all residents are valued on what they think of the assets of their town. And certainly, you're going to get residents, as we heard from my colleagues, that are in support of this. And then, I also heard residents that just know it as Wally Beach, as I stated last meeting, even before this meeting. They convey their thoughts. But, you know, we did our due diligence looking in record. It was not Wally Park. It has no name. The Director of Recreation stated, you know, with the consideration of those residents that go to Wally Beach and want to recognize Wally Beach, it will be recognized actually part of the record, once and for all, after these many years and many generations in the town of Bristol. My question is to the Solicitor, when you define that motion, do you need two motions to define the separation of Halsey Harasoff Park and Wally Beach placard? Or can it be part of the same motion for this initiative going forward?
It'd be no problem if you wanted to make it also part of one motion.
To be part of the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it would be the delineation of where one ends and the other begins.
Now, as far as my comments earlier to do with the policy, it addresses the comments that were made here going forward of the input from residents or subgroups that work with the departments and the administration. Looking at other communities throughout the country that do this, their policy is like 20 pages. And no, Councilwoman, it's just not about years of stature. It, you know, it solidifies and captures on the application that is presented to the towns that are being named or renamed to buildings and assets, what that person has contributed, and why they are being recognized in such a manner, and just, you know, caliber of, you know, naming something in a municipality on behalf of them, and then representing the rest of the town and their residents. I think with this, you're going to get people who are for it and people who are against it. But at the end of the day, it's the memorializing and recognition of the purpose of what we're doing here, of naming that park. So, the way, you know, it's going to be divided, I'd like the compromise for both parties that have a take on this. But I'm curious, I believe we have a resident, and I have the chairman that might want to make his comments as well.
Real simple. I, no one has said they don't want to recognize Halsey. And so, the distinction part of it, I think, that's the distinction. It's just a question, really, what this comes down to is, is this the way that we want to do it? And if it's not the way we want to do it, how else would we like to do it? Because there's no objection to actually recognizing his hard work. So, I think we can take that off the table, and it's not about what he's done, because we all agree, which is great. The question is, do we agree on this? For myself, I don't. I can't make, I think if you have to put a sign up and explain what's what, to me, it's already too much work. It's, it's one big piece to me. I understand what was said, but I disagree. So, for myself, I see this as what it is right now. I think it's wonderful. There was support for the sign initiative, the support for the initiative. I think all of that's great. But I do, I heard some great stuff. For myself, it's not about whether we want to do something. And we're all in agreement, great news. But that's my two cents. But Pat, you were there. I'd like you to share. And then I know, Walter, you wanted to share something. If you could state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Pat Crawford. I live on Fatima Drive in Bristol. And I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Pirella, Mr. Burke, and Councilman Teiska. I think as Mary, excuse me, Councilman Pirella stated, that there's, there are a fair amount of people in Bristol who have no concept of why we have these beautiful parks, and what they've done for us. You can go to Angelina's, with all due respect, and ask people how Independence Park came to fruition. How is it that we're enjoying concerts in the summer? The Philharmonic on our Labor Day weekend, the amount of tourism that comes in, and people that enjoy the park, support the businesses around it, go up to Hope Street, you know, frequent those establishments. And Halsey's tenure is not just a number of years. It's, it's, it's the sum of all the parts. It's just not, he did this, he served for here, back in the 80s, I believe it was like mid to late 80s, he worked against such barriers to establish what he did. Now, at that time, people were in complete disagreement. 30 years later, they can see the vision that he had for us all to enjoy. And I was concerned with Vice Chairman Sweeney's comment that this could set a precedent based on what Mr. Burke had said. There is no precedent to be set. It's already been done for decades. So, to continue this process and rename, well, not even rename, Wally Park doesn't exist in terms of a, a name. It's not Wally Beach. It's this area that people refer to as Wally Park, but it's not defined as such. So, I think, excuse me?
I just wanted to clarify.
Can I finish, please?
Sure.
Thank you. I didn't interrupt you, so I'd like to be able to continue. So, I just think it's disrespectful to, at this point, at such an important time, for such an important figure, who had a vision for Bristol, to say, well, let's start developing a policy now. We don't want to start a precedent. There is no precedent in this situation. And I just, I would be extraordinarily disappointed. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor?
No, I just, I just wanted to clarify in regards to the precedents, that it, you know, there's a lot of people have done a lot of hard work, that have, you know, given their time as a councilwoman, councilman, volunteered at the Fourth of July Committee, and they've done a number of things, wonderful things. I think it's all of us coming together as a, you know, community, and we've done a lot of great things. So, we, when you honor one person and not, why not honor the other person, the person that's worked 40 years on the Fourth of July Committee? Isn't he or she deserving as well as something? And I'm just saying, I think there is important to think big picture about what do we do about all that? I mean, you can, yeah, go ahead and name Halsey Harasoff Park, but what about all those good people? Now, if somebody comes up to us and says, hey, listen, I want to dedicate this, and this person's also deserving of something, of course they are, you know what I mean? So, I think there needs to be more set boundaries as to how we're going, how we're going to dedicate. That's what I'm just trying to get to. It wasn't anything against Halsey. I think he's a great, great guy. I just wanted to clarify my, my thoughts, that's all.
Right. My understanding was that you were concerned that this would set a precedent, when in fact, there's no, this is not a precedent. This is what's been done historically.
Right, because it's not.
And I think to say in the future, what about all these other people, is negating what Halsey has done for this town. I would advocate that, at this juncture, it would be insulting to start creating a policy when you have such an extraordinary person.
Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to let Walter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Very quickly, I did research the cost of the sign, and the sign would cost $800 to make and $200 to put in. So, that was the, the So, that was the cost. The other thing that I noticed in the review of the records of the parks that were built by Halsey, it became instantly apparent to me that he was intricately, memos every day, intricately involved in the daily operation and the construction of particularly Independence Park. It kind of shocked me when I was reading all the memos and the correspondences between different departments and Halsey. He was really, it wasn't just an administrative action on his part, it was a passion to create what he's created. So, I just wanted you to know that, you know.
So, I knew Councilman Tiska was waiting to say something, and Councilman Stewart, and then we'll take a vote.
All right. So, again, to comment on the vice chair's thoughts about, you know, if we can't honor everyone, let's honor no one. You know, I think, well, I think that the person who loyally serves the Fourth of July Committee for forty years absolutely needs recognition. And I'm sure that there are ways to recognize them. And hopefully, they will be recognized. Bristol has a tradition of recognizing people for excellent work. Once a year, we're the most patriotic town in America, and we are recognizing people. You know, the prime spot in Bristol, corner of State and Hope Street, Legion Square. Well, maybe some of you know it as Loafers Corner. There's two named, two names for one spot. And, you know, here we're naming a corner, right downtown after Loafers. We're recognizing Loafers in this community. It is important that we recognize Halsey-Herashoff in this manner. We need to, as a community, show appreciation for excellence. There are clear standouts, and we need to recognize them. And that's why we need to continue to move this forward tonight.
Councilman Stewart? Yes. So, as I stated about how residents feel, I believe we discussed that on how people feel about Wally Beach, Wally Park, and it was discussed that, us looking into the history, it's just known as Wally Beach, and I respect those people in high regard of generations, even before maybe new people that come that don't refer to it as that. You just got to respect all residents as a whole. When I looked at the policies going for other naming municipalities, I have to say that, so if the policy was set right now, what would be the benchmark of us and the subgroups in this administration and council, putting Councilman Herashoff? I think he would meet the standards of that policy. It's not there yet. I'm just saying, going forward, I think a policy has to be set in place for as what was stated here tonight, because you are going to get those people that feel or present something on someone's behalf. I think this is a unique situation of the individual we're talking about. I think it's a unique situation on how it was placed by the Director of Parks and Recreation, Public Works is right next to him, to pay the respects to Wally Beach and name Halsey-Herashoff Park and define it once and for all in our ordinance and in the Town of Bristol to pay tribute to both of those entities. And, you know, to, I even stated it because way back when, when we had the Flower Garden next to Tanyard Brook, of Halsey having his own area. So, if we just disregard this proposal and maybe do the boardwalk or something and name something, it's, we are going to do it. We all stated that. We are going to, you know, respect Halsey and name something. So, what is that? I think, at the end of the day, if we can compromise and meet the needs of all residents, I think this is the fitting place. This is the most meaningful. This will take a place that pays the respect. I just think going forward, and if I support this, Councilman Tiska, I will let you know right now, it's just on the sole motion of the naming of that park. But going forward, I think if you have a timeline, this council and this administration has to take its time with this of how it's going to be done, whether we just have a picture of a sign right now, how it's going to be paid. The initial motion should just be of us honoring and separating Wally Park and Halsey-Herashoff Park tonight. And to get that accomplished, I think we have a lot of work to do on policymaking and make sure that we do it right going forward.
Well, to my counselors, I asked if we could table this discussion. I am definitely opening and honoring Halsey. That's not a question in my mind. But I think if we, we don't have to rush on this, and we can talk it out and get a plan, see the signs, see the costs, see what the agenda is on the event that we're going to have, you know, I think that, I just don't need, I don't think we need to rush it to a vote tonight.
That's what I stated. That's, I just, with all due respect, I am only supporting a motion, and that's why I want Councilman Tiska to state it again, that it's the mere initial motion just to pass the naming and separation of this parcel of land. But going forward, there will be a committee, the administration and this council and department heads, on how this is going to be accomplished. And those are the needs and I think the facts that you're worried about. That will take place, and you will need approval of this council once more going forward for that.
Well, I think that there's no, I mean, I don't think that's, I think that would be a fine first step. I mean, I don't think it's about the unveiling, the reception, the party, whatever it is. It's about naming the parcel of land. And, you know, as far as the sign costing about $1,000, I mean, that, I'm pretty sure it could be easily raised, you know, if that, if it came to that part. So, I mean, I don't think any of those are like critical issues. I really don't. Like, at this point in time, I think the important thing would be to do the naming. And then, because it is October, that this may, the unveiling may have to wait till spring anyway. And as it gives you more than plenty of time to figure out what the event's going to be, what the sign's going to say, what it's going to look like, and so forth. I think we, but I do think it'd be good to go forward, because we've been talking about something for a year, on and off, so.
Okay.
So, as I said, for myself, it's not about the support, it's not about, I agree with all of that. I just don't think this is the right way to do it. But we have a motion and a second to name this area of land, which is, if I may, refer to it as Wally Park, because I saw it on Google Maps and all that, to have that named as Herashoff, Halsey-Herashoff Park, and then make sure that there is clear distinction signage for Wally Beach. Did I understand that motion correctly?
Yes.
And how clear will that signage be for Wally Beach? We know what the sign will be for Halsey-Herashoff Park.
So, is it fair to say that the motion would have, we would need better clarity on what that would look like?
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is correspondence from Jeffrey Willis, Deputy Director of Coastal Resources Management Council, informing the council of a public hearing to be held on October 24th with a deadline for comments of October 16th on proposed amendments to the CRMC recreational boating facilities program.
Diane, is there anything that we need to be considering on this?
No, I don't think so.
Great.
Motion received and filed.
And that was a second, too. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is item I-2 from the Tree Warden regarding the Bristol Town Common Sequoia Tree Assessment.
So, this is a, Walter, I'm going to go back to you on this, but this is a, an assessment for some of the trees on the Town Common. If you recall, we had a lot of dialogue about this going back a solid, ooh, I don't know, year and a half, maybe, two years. And this particular focus is on the, what used to be beautiful sequoia trees. I know that you can't see the packet, but our packet shows, and if you've been to Town Common, you can see that the trees are in, unfortunately, they're not doing well. Half of, literally, half of it is alive and half of it is dead, depending on if you like your glass full or empty. So, but Walter, I'm going to refer it over to you, so you can kind of give us a quick synopsis, so the public knows what we're talking about and we can take some action. And I'm sorry, Steve Saracino, our Tree Warden, is here, too.
Yep. Our Tree Warden and I met considerably regarding the four trees on the common. They're fifty to seventy-five percent dead. They're dangerous with branches that stick straight out eye level. And we've, I've received a lot of complaints from the surrounding churches. And we've treated them four times since the last meeting, last meetings, and they've, as expected, the treatments really didn't do anything at all. There are several reasons why they are in the condition they are. The main reason is they're not native to this area. So, based on the recommendation of our Tree Warden and myself, I'm recommending the removal of those trees and the rededication to surrounding trees in, to keep alive the recognition of the four founding fathers on the four corners of the Town Common.
Does your recommendation include replacement of any of them? And I don't mean by sequoias, but just in general?
Yeah. One of them could be replaced with a native tree. The other three corners are so crowded that you can't plant another tree without taking down a very healthy maple or, you know, elm. So, rededicating an existing tree for that founding father is what we're advising for three of those corners. And then, one would be a new tree.
What's this council's pleasure?
Well, I think it's about time. So, I'm very, very happy. This has been a long time in coming, and they are, especially the one at the corner near the State and High, is embarrassing. I mean, that thing is pretty much dead. And we walk by a dead plant, a dead tree every single week.
Should I take that as a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion. As a motion, then we go forward.
I'll second for my comments that I would like, I would like to.
Take these down and rededicate.
I'd like to thank the Director of Recreation and our Tree Warden and our Administrator for this assessment. It's long overdue, but it's also unsafe with our children playing in those parks, schoolchildren from Alkamo playing in those parks, and with our weather patterns, you know, God forbid one day, you know, those come down on a child, we don't want to be responsible for that. The trees are dead. There is a plan in place. The assessment also takes the canopy and addressing the whole nature of all those trees. The Town Common is a centerpiece of our town. This is a great project, and I think it's well needed. And I think at the end of the day, it will make it look better and it'll be safer. And going forward, it's what the Town Common needs.
Perfect. Any other discussion?
Just that I'm in agreement as well. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just that I'm in agreement as well. I think, you know, they look tired. And we talked about this, what, about four years ago, and we kind of gave it a good effort in regards, so hopefully, yeah, hopefully, we thought they would come back with some treatments and different methods, but looks like they're not going to come back. So, I'm definitely in agreement, taking them down. I'm glad we're going to replant, which is good.
Mr. Chairman?
I think it's very unfortunate that these trees have to come down. I think in recognition of the importance of these trees, that we consider formulating a small committee or task force which can leverage local businesses like Newport Nautical Timbers located on Franklin Street and other local very skilled carpenters and come up with a way to use this wood. I think we mill it down. I think we build a conference table for town hall here. And I think we make cutting boards and other things out of it and use it to raise money to help support further replanting of our trees here at Bristol. So, I think sequoia is wonderful wood to build these things with, and I think we should think about using this as a way to continue to recognize our founding fathers.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Oh, nice recycling initiative.
Why burn it when you can use it, right?
That's right.
I was just going to note that we have thirty trees that are about to be planted throughout town, new trees. Those trees are in rough shape, and it's, they're not demonstrating what they were initially intended to, and that's to honor the four corners and our four founding fathers. So, we'll make sure that the monuments are appropriately moved and there's new dedications. We've got Tanner's here, he's, if you have any questions about the trees that are about to be planted, but that's part of our ongoing annual tree planting.
As long as they're the right trees going forward, and if there's any dedications, Walter, we need to talk about it in policy.
So, we have a motion and a second, and Mary.
I did a motion, yeah.
And I heard that, but I heard that, are you interested in amending it to include potential use?
Yeah, that we would, yes.
Spectacular.
Just give it to like local crafters, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, reuse and maybe you can inlay these monuments.
And maybe, I think it would be nice to have something here, like.
I think it'd be, if it can be used, that would be wonderful. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item is a request from the, excuse me, Director of Community Development and the Principal Planner for Executive Session, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. The next item is RFP eight, excuse me, Bid 866. This is for consultant planning services for infrastructure improvement plan for marine and composites industries. We have two proposals received. The first is from Caputo and Wick Limited of Rumford, Rhode Island, in the amount of And the second from Par Corporation of Lincoln in the amount of $41,715.
This bid was initially started by whom, please? Diane, would you remind us and the public of what this bid was for?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Actually, this is to implement a grant that we received. We partnered with the Rhode Island Marine Trades Alliance and the Composites Alliance. And we received a grant in partnership with them from the EDA to work to try to grow the composites industry in the state, but primarily in Bristol. And so, the RMTAs portion of this will be to look at an economic impact study and a strategic plan. Our portion of this is to look at our existing infrastructure, what the businesses need to grow and expand their businesses in terms of, you know, capacity for the sewer, water, broadband, electrical, infrastructure, and things like that. So, this consultant will work for the town to, in partnership with the studies that RMTA will be doing, to come up with a plan. And then, the expectation or the hope is that with this plan, we can apply for future grant funds to actually implement the recommendations for improving the infrastructure.
So, this is covered by a grant?
Correct.
So, not only is it a phenomenal initiative, but it's covered by a grant?
Correct, yes.
That's awesome.
Spectacular. What's this council's pleasure?
Motion to refer this to the administrative work in the best interest of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is another request for a executive session, which we'll also take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. And then, we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with Chairman Colero.
So, I'm going to start, as we talked last week, or sorry, last meeting, to Director McBride wanted to get us and the public an update on how we're making out with road improvements.
Good evening, thank you. Real quick, we have a couple of ongoing projects with the road improvement program in the town. One is the contract that we put out a couple of months ago, and that's underway, well underway, has been for the last couple of months. Currently, they're working on Fatima Drive, and they're working their way from Hawthorne westerly towards Medicom Avenue. They paved portion of it yesterday to get a binder course down on the road, so that makes it more usable for the neighborhood as they fully reconstruct that road. The second portion is, I met with the contractor for National Grid yesterday in the field to go over their trench repairs that they've been doing on the western side of town, Gibson Road area, Mulberry Road area, where they've done a lot of gas main upgrades. And they're getting ready to do the road improvements over there to fix those. getting ready to do the road improvements over there to fix those open trenches. Unfortunately, as I stated earlier, Gibson Road from Ridge Road easterly to Hope Street is still undergoing a lot of gas main and service line upgrades, so they're not gonna, they're not gonna touch that end of the road, probably won't get to that till next year, and that's the unfortunate event. Most of the other ones west of Ridge Road on Gibson in the Mulberry Road area and some of the Finger Roads off there, Acacia and a few others, will, you'll start to see Lynch Construction out there milling the road down to put a final trench patch down. So that'll be coming, beginning, I believe, next Wednesday, they're gonna start working those roads to include the area over by Gittera School on Washington and High.
Spectacular.
So those are ongoing, should be wrapped up, you know, here by the end of this month, hopefully.
Thank you, thank you. On a sad note, Judge Walter Stone passed away very recently. I consider the judge a friend. I found him to be hilarious. I found him to be professional, and I found him to be enlightening when I talked to him. He swore in this counsel and clerk, at least we believe he did, there was some question on whether or not there was all the words that were there, so I joked because that's the way he was. I found him to be just a pleasure to be around. He was, he was just a wonderful person. Couple other things, we were talking about history tonight of the town and the wonderful history that we have. We have some wonderful restaurants in town. My wife and I dropped off my son at CCD, and we took a walk, and we went into Bristol Family Restaurant and sat at the counter, and I hadn't been in in a while, and I had forgotten, when you look behind you, some wonderful pictures of the town, the bridge being built, and then the bridge with the toll booths on it, and what used to be Blythewald and what Blythewald is now. So if you're interested in history and you like good breakfast, go to Bristol Family Restaurant and go to all of our restaurants. I suggest going to all of them twenty times and then deciding which one that you like best, and support those local restaurants. And speaking of food, the school has, the state has what's called the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. You may or may not be familiar about this, but that means that there is a program out there to help people in need make sure that their child is fed during the day. The benefit of that is pretty obvious, that a child with a full tummy can concentrate and focus, and that means that they're not only a good student, but they're not taking time away from their neighboring students. I bring this up because the program is ridiculously easy to take advantage of. If you or somebody that you know needs this, then it's a quick application, it's an eight and a half by eleven, there is very little information that's necessary. I spoke to the superintendent before I wanted to bring this up. It's how much of income that you have, they don't wanna know everything else, there's some real basic stuff, and that determine is made locally. If the child qualifies, or children qualify, their card looks like everybody else's. Their food is exactly what everybody else gets. And if you are coming from a place that you don't, you feel that you would detract from the community by doing that and cost money to the community, believe it or not, you actually do the exact opposite. When you take advantage of free and reduced lunch, the community, the school, actually gets more funds from the state. So it is not a lose, it's an absolute win, and if you can take advantage of it, you know somebody can, take a moment, point them to the school administration, and they can walk you through that, and as I said, it's very simple, it's very private, it's very respectful, it's very important. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
Just a quick reminder that the big holiday, Halloween walkabout will be coming up on ten twenty-nine from one to three downtown.
That's right.
Put on by the BMA, so we all know that it's a massive event, lots of kids. I think we all know how many, how much candy we give out, so long and the short of it, I just wanted to make that announcement that that's out there. And finally, I just wanted to let everybody know that the fireman's tax incentive, incentive plan has passed the House and the Senate, so for those of you watching, it's a small tax relief plan for the firemen based on a certain criteria, so long and the short of it, that's exciting, 'cause they do a lot of hard work in the town, so. Anyway, that's it. I hope you guys have a great week. Thank you.
Mr. Tiska.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So regarding that incentive, just some clarification, it's passed the House and Senate, but we as council members have some work to do. We are now afforded the enabling legislation to create an ordinance and a structure which can recognize our rescue and firefighters, so look forward to working through that prior to next budget session. I wanna recognize Diane Williamson for helping pull off this initiative with the EDA grant and looking at the infrastructure necessary for the expansion and of the marine and composites industry within Bristol. It will be a model, it is a model, in how we are working together with the state's trade association for both the marine industry and composites. We have broad support for what we're doing, you know, statewide, but also federally. So this is really gonna set us up to do some great things, to see this sector grow. Although the biggest challenge to this sector growing is not just space, which we'll be looking at, but workforce. So in talking with Joe DePont, who was here earlier, C fiber glass, he's gonna need twenty people in the next six months just to fill the existing orders that he has, working as boat builders, carpenters, electricians. So jobs are here in Bristol. Now, there's two ways to get those jobs. One is to go knock on the door at Joe's place. The other way is to go over to RMTA's office, the trade association, which is here in Bristol on Papa Squash Road, and introduce yourself to Brian. Here in Bristol, we administer thousands of dollars of workforce training dollars to get people in Bristol and surrounding communities trained to take jobs that are available at Joe DePont's shop. So if you're looking for work, there's work, and if you didn't get that, please find me and I can help point you in the right direction. Again, just recognizing Bristol's presence in this industry, US Sailing's headquarters at Roger Williams is hugely impactful to our community. People are coming to Bristol to visit, to do business at US Sailing's office, at Roger Williams. These are people from all around the world that are coming here to talk about rating rules, events, and so on, and so I think it's fantastic that we have so much of this going on here in Bristol. So with that, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Perella.
Just briefly, I just wanted to touch on, since you brought up the firefighters' tax plan, I'm happy to see that get, be moving forward. I just wanted to mention, and I'm glad that we had a moment of silence, but we saw all the great dedicated first responders on the other night when the horrible horrific shooting took place in Las Vegas, and all the people in the crowd, I mean, it just, as bad as that whole situation was and as scary it is, to see that people are really inherently good people who took care of each other, that all the first responders who happened to be in the audience, off-duty police officers, firefighters, our veterans, and just other people, nurses, doctors, all kind of went forward and helped each other out and got people to safety, people who just got people into pickup trucks and ran them down to the hospital before the, before the emergency vehicles were all there. Then, of course, all of the, the police department and, and people going into and trying to figure out where the shots are coming from. I mean, I just think that it just draws attention to, out of something so bad, we also see the good that people have, and what we, and I think that's really what we are, is the people who wanna help each other and take care of each other in a time of crisis, and hopefully that can go beyond time of crisis. So that's pretty much all I have to say tonight.
Mr. Stewart.
So going last, a lot of my colleagues, I have everything written down, and right here says first responders, to remind me of, you know, all those people tragically that passed, but not only in Las Vegas, but past events, hurricanes, and just the other night, coming home late, I turned on the TV and Sully was on, and, you know, you get, watching a movie before you go to bed, and, and I was just looking at the Port Authority, everyone's response, the reaction, the community reaction when tragedy strikes us, whether it's here in Bristol, the state, or throughout our country and the world. It made me reflect, chief, and talking about our firefighters, all the first responders. I think we all have to reflect deeper and thank each and every one of you for what you do, day in and day out, and also just love your family and friends because you never know. Life is precious, so, you know, it's times like this that we do come together, but, you know, we should just strive to be a better place all, all together. On another note, I'm just glad that you're giving the update, Kevin, for the roads, to convey to the public what's going on, because as we stated time and time again, we would like to do more roads, but we're keeping them within our budget. Every year, we're a municipality that is doing it right, doing the roads right, and it may seem that, like, we don't wanna do all the roads, but it's just, I think we're making progress every year with the plan that we're working on. We are gonna be going into executive session for open space. We talked about parks and signage. I would just like, going forward, Diane, a conversation. I know recently with Perry Farm and some other areas of open space which is purchased, not only with grants, but with the tax-paying dollars that go along with that for preservation purposes and the embodiment of the town, and there's signage in the past ones. I really think we have to look at wayfinding and find funds to put signage at all our open space, just like trust and land preservations throughout the state that identify and show the taxpayers, this is your open space, this is what this space is. So I'd like to have that conversation going forward, maybe, you know, not right now, but in a capital budget conversation of how we can identify all our open space land throughout the town so the taxpayers can know that that's what they purchased. As far as the holidays coming, we talk about caring, October will come and go, it'll be Thanksgiving and the holidays, and caring is sharing, so there's a lot of needy people, so we have the East Bay Food Pantry, we have a lot of people who contribute with the walkabout and whatnot, so, you know, just be mindful of those people, of the people in need, and especially, that goes to this conversation. A couple of meetings ago, we had many of our seniors here with the change going forward as a town of Bristol and our policy with the parks and recreation going forward, the communication with the town administrator of the needs of our seniors, and the conversation that's gonna be needed for all of us, and all the entities and groups in our town that see the needs of our seniors, and that conversation of where we wanna be in the future to meet all those needs. And one topic came up in the past, and I wanna revisit it, is, you know, when they go to the senior center, there's a lot of elderly seniors that are all by themselves, and they go home, and they, they're modest, they stay in their houses in Bristol, they try to keep up their house, but they're by themselves. And I know in the past, conversation with the police department, I think through human resources and the whole umbrella of going forward, how we will be there for our seniors, we need to revisit maybe a plan, maybe it could be funded through CDBG, and conversations with the police and administration, and this council is a program to look at those seniors that are by themselves, to check up on them, to really show that we care about them, because we do. There's a lot of conversation going through the town, and I know for myself and my colleagues, we will do whatever we need to do to address and see the needs of our seniors and continuously to keep working on it going forward. And that's about all I got. Thank you, Mike Davis, and, well, wherever he is. Thank you, Sergeant Rams, and my colleagues, and everyone who came out tonight, and everyone tuning in at home. Thank you, have a good night.
Town Administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. First, I'd like to give the council an update on the sewer main project on Ferry Road. The bid, as you know, was awarded a little over one point two million dollars, and that was to a Bristol company, CB Utility. Again, the water, not water, the sewer main was desperately needed. There was a bottleneck, eight-inch main, correction, twelve-inch main flowed into an eight-inch main. We've had previous backups in the Ambrose Drive area. This should solve that issue. We're gonna put in a brand-new twelve-inch main, the entire length of Ferry Road. The majority of that construction will be completed, the dig-in place by, before winter sets in, then we'll, company will come back and wrap up in the springtime. Again, desperately needed, that was the project that Roger Williams University offered a half million dollars, so a little bit over a third of it was coming from Roger Williams. It needed to be done, anyway. But I wanted to bring that up also, just to stress our infrastructure. We're making strides on the surface and below grade, which is just as important. It was great to see Troop Six here tonight. I think we all needed that as a nation. We had a tough week, and I think that was very appropriate, and a thank you to their leaders and the Boy Scouts that were here, and it was good to see our future involved. That was great. Was happy to speak to Linda Maya, the owner of Full Channel Television today. Full Channel, there's a press release out, Full Channel was purchased by Countrywide Broadband. Ms. Maya, who's very vested in the future success of her family's company, the legacy of the company that was started by her father, her son also works as an owner, so her hope is, and what is believed, is that Countrywide is gonna invest money into the infrastructure and bring the capability up to one gigabyte per second.
Wow.
Which is to what Councilman Tiska said.
Sorry, I'm a tech guy, that's phenomenal, so.
It's gonna be much needed for our industry, our businesses, it's gonna be one more thing to attract businesses to our industrial park and areas in town, so we're doing well.
If I may, Mr. Administrator, just as a reference point, that's fifteen to twenty times faster than what most people have right now, so huge number, that's really neat.
Yeah. I'd be remiss if I didn't say Full Channel has been very supportive of the community. In fact, I just received a check this week from, for supporting the last night concert. They employ Bristol people, area people, and from what I understand, what Ms. Maya told me is, Countrywide is gonna increase employment, and they're gonna try to improve their, increase their customer base, so we're being hopeful.
Spectacular.
Few minor details, but I think they're very important. Our DPW director worked with the superintendent from DOT, the sweepers will be out nine PM tonight on Hope Street. We're gonna try to keep up with the leaves, prevent them from going into the storm drains, and we'll do the best we can with that. Shredding event at DPW this Saturday, eight AM to noon, Saturday. And one last thing, I'd just like to say thank you to Donna Falcoa, our general chairperson at the Fourth of July Committee for the hard work that she did during her two years, and I wish her many years watching the parade now. Hopefully, I don't think that's what she'll do, but I hope that's what she does, and she deserves it, and that's all I have. Good night.
Motion would be to move into executive session pursuant to forty-two forty-six five A five with regard to the purchase of open space, forty-two forty-six five A two with regard to litigation, the Leperle case.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.